Good afternoon, everybody. I'm calling the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order for Thursday, November 21st, 2019. Item number one is roll call. Ms. Riddell, would you do roll call, please?
Thank you. Chair Wiscombe?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan? Absent. Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan is absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two is preliminary matters 2A, request for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Ms. DeBusschere?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to announce that item 3A on today's agenda has been postponed indefinitely. That's the project at 923 Castillo Street.
Thank you. Okay. And any announcements and appeals?
Yes, just one announcement, that the council's consideration of the appeal at 302 through 308 West Montecito Street was continued to their December 17th meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 2C, review consideration and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. So we have the minutes from the November 7th, 2019, meeting, and Planning Commission Resolution Number 018-19 for 1723 Garden Street. Do any of my fellow commissioners request that these be taken separately? Okay. Any revisions? Okay. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Schwartz, second by Commissioner Lodge. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. And we're moving on to item D, comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on the agenda. Due to time constraints, each person is limited to two minutes. I don't have any speaker slips, so we will close general public comment. And as Ms. DeBusschere said, item number 3A has been postponed indefinitely, so we're going to move on to item number 3B. Excuse me. It's the application of Patsy Price, Brownstein, Hyatt, Farber &amp; Schreck, agent for Galleta West Sanitary District, 1 Clyde Adams Road, APN 073-450-003, A-F/COZ, which is the aviation's facilities coastal overlay zone, general plan designation Galleta Slough Natural Reserve. And this is for consideration of an addendum to a mitigated negative declaration to remove approximately 530 feet of chain link fence and install a three-foot-high concrete flood wall with an approximately three-foot-high wrought iron spear top post surrounding the Galleta West Sanitary District, and issuance of a coastal development permit on the Santa Barbara Airport property in the appealable jurisdiction of the California Coastal Zone. So the discretionary application for this project is a coastal development permit to allow the proposed project in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. So we have Mr. Vermont here. Welcome. And you're going to give a presentation, and then I think Ms. Price is going to have a few remarks, and then we'll probably just open it up for questions and discussion amongst our commissioners. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commission. Your description of the proposed project is spot on, so I'll try to move quickly through this. The proposed project is at the Galleta West Sanitary District facility, which is in the city of Santa Barbara and on Santa Barbara Airport property, but just barely. It's behind the UCSB Police and Fire Station on what's identified as Clyde Adams Road at the airport. It's surrounded on three sides by the Galleta Slough, and on the fourth side by its access, which is adjacent to UCSB lot, parking lot 32. This is the proposed project, which as you described is a flood wall with spear top posts that would surround the site. If north is now to the left on this site plan, but it's simply a wall that surrounds the facility with a couple of exceptions where existing buildings would be floodproofed up to that three-foot elevation. The application is for a coastal development permit to approve this as its development in the coastal zone. The standard of review, according to our municipal code, is to find the project consistent with the policies of the California Coastal Act, as well as consistent with the local coastal program. In this case, it's the Airport and Galleta Slough Coastal Plan implementing guidelines and the zoning ordinance. So we'll go quickly over those. The project is consistent, as far as staff is concerned, with the Coastal Act, because it would not change public access. It's replacing an existing fence. It's also not in an area that's identified as a scenic resource, and would not introduce new populations to any environmental risks. Similarly, the Airport and Galleta Slough Local Coastal Plan has policies relating to protection of coastal resources. Because the project wouldn't change base flood elevation, it's not in an identified coastal sensitivity zone, or cultural sensitivity zone, or identified scenic viewpoint, and is not adding to intensification of use of public services. It can be found consistent. One issue is policy C4 of the Airport and Galleta Slough Local Coastal Plan identifies a 100-foot buffer from environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Because of the proximity of the Galleta Slough, this site is, you know, abuts wetlands, which are identified as environmentally sensitive habitat. I've drawn on this exhibit what the 100-foot boundary would be. It would provide for the ability to flood wall one building, but the rest of the campus would be outside of it. And so, policy C4 does include a clause that if it's infeasible, then you provide the maximum buffer available, and that's also addressed in the SEQA document, which I'll get to later. As mentioned, the project's in the aviation facility zone. One of the allowable uses is any use that's non-aviation, but is determined not to be in conflict with aviation by the Airport Director and the Community Development Director, both of whom signed a letter to that effect earlier this year. The project went to the Architecture Board of Review last week, so I do not have the minutes attached to the staff report, but the item was continued to Planning Commission with generally favorable comments. ABR found the materials, size, and scale were appropriate for the industrial neighborhood in that area. There were some concerns about color and the austerity of the wrought iron posts. The environmental review was prepared by Galleta West Sanitary District as lead agency for the project. The City of Santa Barbara is a permitting authority as a responsible agency. The SEQA document originally prepared in 2017 was for a larger project that was a mitigated negative declaration. That mitigated negative declaration had an addendum that was approved in April of this year to include this flood wall as a component of that review. That M&amp;D incorporates mitigation measures, which I will go over briefly to spare you reading the entire document. The biological resources section includes limits on the construction envelope and requires the noticing of crews so that they avoid spill of spoils or hazardous materials, as well as the spilling of excess noise into the Galleta Slough to minimize impacts during Standard conditions for protection of archaeological, unanticipated archaeological resources are applied for the cultural resources section, although it's not in a sensitivity zone, there still remains at the airport the possibility of unanticipated finds. A geotechnical report was prepared in support of the mitigated negative declaration that includes a number of recommendations to protect occupants of new structures from seismic risks. Those are incorporated as well into the flood wall to make sure that the flood wall is seismically sound. And then finally, the hydraulics section identified a potential impact related to sea level rise, because although it's designed for the 75-year useful life, you know, extending the 75-year sea level rise projections out, the flood walls have an appropriate height, those projections are not guaranteed to be the case. Sea level could rise at a more rapid rate. So the mitigation measure requires the Galleta West Sanitary District to monitor best available science and revisit the flood wall if it turns out to be too low with respect to sea level rise. The applicant requested that condition B2 with respect to uninterrupted water flow be either rewritten or removed on account of the fact that it includes a requirement that the applicant preserve any historic flow of water. In the applicant's have the opinion that that would include floodwater, which of course the flood wall is intended to prohibit. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. You may elect to include or removing that. Otherwise, staff's recommendation is that you make the findings on page seven of the staff report, which are to formally consider the already adopted addendum to the mitigated negative declaration and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval on Exhibit A. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vermont. Okay. It's Commissioner Thompson. You're not in your usual spot, so I saw the like-o and I had to think about.
Mr. Vermont, does staff have any opinion on condition B2? Wording change or anything suggested?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Thompson, I think it would be acceptable to remove it. I don't think that there's a significant change there. That's a rather standard condition to respect existing water courses. I don't interpret it as being in conflict with flood flows, but I don't think it's necessary to approve the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Ms. Price, would you like to come up to the podium? And welcome.
Thank you.
And give a present. I'll put the timer on here, but I don't think you're going to need. Thank you.
I will be very brief, and Andrew already covered the project thoroughly. My name is Patsy Price, and I'm, my name is Patsy Price. I'm agent for Galleta West Sanitary District. Good afternoon. Galleta West is undertaking a process of updating and repairing its headquarters facility on this property. This facility was first constructed in the 1960s and has not been significantly modified since. The headquarters site contains administrative offices, a garage, and other maintenance buildings, and the district's main pump station, which pumps wastewater from its service area to Galleta Sanitary District for treatment. Because the property's in a 100-year flood zone, any new construction, as well as any modifications to existing buildings, are required to be floodproofed. Now, today, we're just here with the perimeter wall. We'll come back to you in the future, hopefully soon, with separate coastal development permit applications for building upgrades and modifications. Initially, the plan, as we were approaching this repair and upgrade project for the headquarters, was to individually floodproof each building. However, that would require installing flood barrier panels at every building opening in the event that a flood was anticipated, and then storing all of those panels on the site for the rest of the time. So that would, as you can imagine, require a lot of space, as well as workload for operations staff. In further evaluating options, the district determined that a perimeter wall was a more operationally efficient proposal. And so, in addition, the perimeter wall will protect the entire site, not just the buildings. So any equipment that's stored outside, materials, trash enclosures that are outside of habitable structures would be protected by this perimeter wall from flood flows. In addition, this site is somewhat unique in that the storm drains, when they were originally designed in the 60s, flowed directly to Galleta Sanitary District. So stormwater is treated at the sanitary district. It's a very unusual situation, but this perimeter flood wall would prevent that flood flow from entering the storm drain and then inundating the sanitary district. So that's an additional benefit to a perimeter wall as opposed to floodproofing individual buildings. Andrew already covered the proposed mitigation, which has been incorporated into the project and included as conditions of approval. Our only request is that you consider removing the uninterrupted flow requirement, or modifying it as appropriate to acknowledge that this wall is intended to prevent flood flow onto the property. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have some, I know I have some questions. Does anyone have questions of Ms. Price while she's standing? Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the flood wall, you came to us several months ago, and that was a CDP for building remodel?
Yes, actually, it was 2016.
Many moons.
Several months ago.
And so, the flood elevation hasn't changed since then?
It has not changed, but the details regarding flood protection were not hammered out when we had applied for that CDP. That was for a renovation of the operations building and a garage, addition to a garage on the property. Unfortunately, that permit, while we've been sort of trying to resolve this issue of how best to provide flood protection, has expired, and so we'll be returning to you again to revisit that application and hopefully renew it.
So in carpentry that we have, advisory flood elevations because of the Thomas fire, there's no new flood elevation here in the slough?
No.
Because of fire in the foothills lately?
There hasn't been. We had a base, we have a base flood elevation determination by the city that is fairly, the one that's in your staff report is from 2014, but I believe there's a more current one from either 2018 or 2019 that's been completed by the city, and it hasn't changed.
Yeah. So, thank you. And will you have to go through the substantial improvement procedure with the city as to...
Through the Building Department?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what you're kind of going through now? Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I don't know who these, let's see. I have questions on this, on the conditions of approval, so would that be, Mr. Vermont, would that be you? And then I have a couple of questions. You are probably better to answer the mitigated negative declaration question, so let me just start with those. And this is just, okay, so I'm on, I'm in the M&amp;D, which is Exhibit D in our packet, page 61 of 136 pages, and I'm on page 15 of that. Okay. And I'm in the last paragraph. I mean, I read this, I read this pretty thoroughly, because that's what we're up here to do. "The revised project edition of the perimeter combined flood wall and fence installation would slightly reduce onsite pervious surfaces." And then down further is the minor reduction in impervious surfaces. Is that a typo, or, I'm not trying to catch you off-base. I'm just, I was, I read it yesterday, and I've just put a big question mark there, because I wasn't sure what you were trying to say.
No, it does look like it's a typo, or...
So, is it, is it a reduction in pervious?
That's correct.
I would assume it would be.
A 3% reduction in pervious.
Okay. So that's something that you could probably just note and correct, then. Okay. And then, okay, and then on page 16, which is the next page, we're talking about sea level rise, something that, you know, the city is, we're very much talking in a subcommittee about now. So are the implementation strategies proposed, have you done a vulnerability assessment, and are you, do you actually have in place implementation strategies that address sea level rise?
So, a vulnerability study has been done by the Galleta Slough Management Committee assessing the whole Galleta Slough area, and that study was evaluated in the mitigated negative declaration, which I have a copy of here. This is just the addendum.
Okay.
Which added this flood wall. But we did thoroughly evaluate the impact of sea level rise and how it relates to this project in the initial M&amp;D, did the vulnerability assessment per coastal commission guidelines, and determined that the design of the project, including the new flood wall, would not be impacted by sea level rise based on the best available science now.
Okay.
But acknowledging that we don't know exactly what's going to happen.
Yeah, best available science can change, yeah.
The district is committed, and has already committed, to continuing to work with the Galleta Slough Management Committee, and to evaluate on an ongoing basis how sea level rise will impact this facility, as well as all of the other facilities that are, infrastructure that are part of its operations.
Right. Okay. Well, that's a, that's a good answer. Best available science, I wasn't sure where you were in that, because you can be looking at the different methodologies used for sea level rise analysis, or you can actually be doing a vulnerability assessment and figuring out. I think your project is 75-year life, or something. 2094 is what I remember.
Right. It was an assumed 75-year life.
Okay. Okay. So you're, you're pretty much up to where we are. We're looking at sea level rise, you know, up to 2100 right now. So, okay. And then you, on page 20, and then, and then I think you can go sit down, really. On page 20, the section on transportation, are there, I'm going back to the conditions of approval, and that's on page three of the C of A, says that the parking will be onsite. And are there any impacts during construction, parking during construction, that should be noted? Is there adequate space? That's what I'm asking you.
There is. I don't know, Andrew, you can go back to just the, maybe the site plan, or even the aerial. The road that provides access to the district property is essentially a dead-end road. Nobody else uses this, and so, and it's actually UCSB property. UCSB has, for the pending other improvements, confirmed that vehicular access and even parking on this property is acceptable to them. So we expect that if there is any overflow parking, you can see there's parking areas on the kind of the southwest corner of the site that usually are not full, but if there's any additional construction parking that's needed, it can be accommodated on this dead-end roadway here.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Great answer. Thank you very much, Ms. Price. I appreciate it. And the rest of my questions are conditions of approval questions, if I, if we could go to that section. So we have in, on page one of the C of A, this is page 31 in our packet, we have B1, which is the approved development. It doesn't mention the, it doesn't mention the posts, fence posts, and it doesn't talk about the demolition, and I realize demolition isn't necessarily development, but isn't that part of the project? I mean, shouldn't that all be included in the scope, since this is what we're issuing, or considering issuing a coastal development permit for all the work?
Madam Chair, you're correct.
Okay.
This is written with an interest for brevity, but we could use the exact same project description.
I mean, I think it's important, just for the record, if someone, you know, is reading this, you know, four years from now, and, well, wait a minute, you didn't get a coastal development permit to remove that fence, or whatever.
Sure.
So, okay. And then, let's see. And I was just curious, there's a section in here that talks about you need a project environmental coordinator, and this is on page three of nine. D4, I guess. D4, yeah. Okay. And so, who determines, or what's the frequency of monitoring? Is there, is there a specific standard, or will the city set that standard? I'm just curious.
Madam Chair, that's typically a conversation between the contractor and city staff regarding the specific conditions, how often they need to be reviewed.
So it's a consensus item.
And it can, yes, and it can vary by mitigation measure. Some might need daily reporting, say, for wildlife protection. Others might just be monthly updates.
Okay. And that would be true of the biological monitoring also, then?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Fine. Okay. And then on page four of the conditions of approval, Commissioner Thompson's laughing at me. 6B, you talk about a temporary limit fence. Should be installed at the outer edge of the construction limit disturbance. I'm just curious, is this, would this fence potentially cause more harm than another methodology to outline that area that doesn't have such an impact? It seems like the fence is going to have a big impact on...
Madam Chair, a temporary limit fence, you may think of as the, like, an orange temporary construction fencing with stake in with wooden posts.
Oh, good. Is that what it is? Okay.
That's the intent.
When they started talking about signs on it and stuff, I was thinking more of the, you know, the marboard fence with the, you know, with the metal poles and posts and stuff. Okay. Good. And then, that was related to sea level rise. That's all the questions I have. So Commissioner Thompson can stop laughing right now.
I wasn't laughing at you.
I heard rumblings over there. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just back to, sort of follow on to one of your questions, page three of nine, and the conditions of approval, in terms of the work of the project environmental coordinator, does this work cease or is concluded with this final mitigation monitoring report at the conclusion of what's described as demolition, excavation, grading, installation? And I would ask you to contrast that sort of, you know, time-defined monitoring, limited monitoring, as opposed to on the next page, page four, under biological monitoring. That says ongoing monitoring. Could you compare and contrast the different, different monitoring requirements for me, Mr. Vermont?
Commissioner Schwartz, and that's a, both of those are restricted for construction. This is in the section for construction-related mitigation, or conditions.
So it'll all cease after construction is finalized, completed?
Correct. After the conclusion of the building inspector's review, when we sign off on the closeout.
Okay. And am I overlooking any other monitoring that would be ongoing, or is this it? This is all I seem to note, but perhaps you could confirm that for me.
Commissioner Schwartz, the condition that extends beyond the construction phase is the condition for ongoing review of sea level rise, science, and participation with the Galleta Slough Management Committee.
Which we discussed as Commissioner Wiscombe was inquiring about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. That's my one question.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the buffer area question, is that an established buffer that is recorded, permission needed, or is it just one you're doing voluntarily?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Campanella, you're asking about the 100-foot buffer?
Yep, 100-foot buffer.
That's required by policy under the Airport and Galleta Slough Local Coastal Plan. We, you know, the City of Santa Barbara has two LCPs, one for the city generally, and then a separate one for the airport segment. And the airport segment includes a policy for 100-foot buffer to be maintained if feasible.
Okay.
And so, the reason I brought that to your attention is because you would be making the decision that that's not feasible in this project.
Okay. So, the, it's not, so that's a, that takes care, with that satisfied, then the work can be completed. You don't have any other constraints relative to buffers or setbacks that would affect you?
Correct. There's no, there's no other setbacks, because the project's sort of internal to the airport parcels. So the airport parcel setbacks are quite a distance away.
Okay. And the block wall versus chain link, and wrought iron spokes versus what you call concertina wire, or the rolled wire, does that differentiate, is the use of one... wire or the rolled wire, does that differentiate, is the use of one versus the other differentiate how, what an impact may be on wildlife or birds?
It's entirely possible that the wrought iron is more permissive of wildlife passage, but it would not be, of course, chain link fences can also be undercut by burrowing. That would not be possible with a flood wall, so I'd say it's probably, you know, an even trade.
Okay. So not something that should be studied, you feel? It's not, it's maybe the level of significance is minor because each would have some type of positive effect.
Well, the wildlife passage onto the plant is not considered wildlife part of her. So across the plant, perhaps, but it's also possible to go around the facility in the escha.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, the addendum to the NMD discusses aesthetics too, and I would imagine concertina wire is probably not an aesthetically pleasing material.
It's very clear, you know, people entering.
It's very clearly do not enter, yes. Okay, very good. I don't see any other lights on, so I would, certainly, we have two. Oh, you, okay. You want to comment?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have opened public comment. I don't have any speaker slip, so I forgot. So seeing no speakers, I will close public comment. Okay. Back to the, Commissioner Lodge.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that the planning commission approve a coastal development permit for the proposed project, making the findings in section nine of the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval in exhibit A, except for item B1, to add after limited to in the second line, removal of an existing chain link fence and construction of a, of the wall, essentially, and then the elimination of condition B2 relating to uninterrupted water flow.
Second.
Okay, great. Commissioner Lodge, would you add to that also the, adding the posts, the posts on the wall? That's not, that's not in here either. So that's the other, it's a, it's a wall with the fence posts. It's, well, the description of the item is spear top, three-foot-high concrete flood wall with three-foot-high wrought iron spear top posts, which also has been omitted from the approved development. Yeah, so, okay.
Yes, make that part of the motion to include that.
Commissioner Thompson, do you accept that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Lodge and a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And I guess we'll see you again sometime, Ms. Price. Yes, thank you. Okay, we are moving on then to, oh, I have to announce, I'm sorry, I have to announce the appeal period. So this project is appealable to city council within 10 days. So, thank you. Okay. And we are on to the administrative agenda, item number four. 4A is committee and liaison reports, first staff hearing officer liaison report. Commissioner Jordan isn't here, so we have nothing there. And A2 is other committee and liaison reports. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm the PC liaison to the Creeks Committee. And they really are, are moving along with some excellent projects and all courtesy of the extra bid tax that the voters approved some time ago, which provides the funding. At their last meeting on November 13th, they had a presentation on the Arroyo Borough Open Space Restoration Project Phase Two. We approved Phase One and we went out and saw it, and I went out there recently and the plants are growing. It's going to be very nice. And now they're working on the area upstream of that part. Creeks Phase One was a four-acre restoration project. And then this spring, they will start working on Phase Two, which is upstream from there. They also had a report on the Andre Clark Bird Refuge Restoration Project. As we all know, the bird refuge has been a source of difficulty because while historically it was connected to Sycamore Creek, which when it was connected to it, there was enough water flow to flush out the refuge, that no longer exists. And so, and that watershed was almost four times larger than the existing watershed, so there just isn't that much rainwater flowing through the bird refuge. So they've been, those poor water quality and strong odors have been problematic since the 1920s, when it was first created. So they discuss various alternatives. One of them, interestingly, is probiotics that might be, might be used to, anyway, they are proposing a construction of a 3,700-square-foot low-flow water treatment wetland on an open space within the Muni Tennis Court on Old Coast Highway. There's, I was trying to visualize where that is myself, but there is some empty space at the Montecito End. I must be where they're talking. The wetland will be designed to remove nutrients from dry season low flow and improve water quality. And construction of a 10-foot-wide, 1,600 linear foot-long permeable paver multi-use path on the north side of the lake. This is to improve the recreational opportunities there. And removal and replacement of the concrete weir or dam and weir gate at Cabrillo Boulevard. We're currently blocked, lake water from flowing into the lagoon and the ocean, except during very large rain events. And it's expected that removal and replacement of it will allow better management of water flow between the lake, between the refuge and the ocean. So that, those are the things that are happening there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. It's a good report. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, on Monday, the city ABR and Montecito BAR jointly met to discuss the Olive Mill Roundabout. Maybe Commissioner Schwartz might have more to say on that, but they're marching through it. I'm not sure they came to any big conclusions. It's an ongoing process by staff, several staffs, SB, CAG, city, county, to try to craft something that satisfies everyone. It's kind of like designing a camel.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To supplement Commissioner Thompson's report, yes, from the joint city ABR and Montecito BAR hearing of Monday of this week, there's been a clear determination that what we'll call the geometry of the round, of the core, the center of the roundabout cannot be moved due to a variety of complex property ownership issues, safety, safety concerns, et cetera, in moving all users safely in, around the roundabout. So that's fixed, and the only issues remaining before it comes to a joint planning commission hearing in early 2020, and that joint, that will be Montecito Planning Commission and our city planning commission, will be issues of landscaping, lighting, and some continued local property, private property owner stakeholder discussions in terms of concerns around impacts to those property owners and their investments. So we'll look to have that on our agenda early next year. And then my only other report, and perhaps you'd like to comment further, Madam Chair, and this is a Tuesday of this week, our sea level rise subcommittee hearing, but I think I'll, I'll turn that over to you. You could give an update. I should continue. Very briefly, we really delved in with our consultant on the phone with us this week to looking at the coastal zone assets predominantly public down by our coast, but also some private. But the predominantly public ones have significant concerns for us in terms of vital infrastructure, vital utilities, as you can imagine, with impending sea level rise as, as the science is now predicting. And then we also started to look at the economic vulnerability of our city and needing to do some very, both short-term and long-term economic studies and estimates before we begin to analyze where and how we're going to secure the funding, the significant funding to reposition, relocate, restructure if necessary, many areas of our coastal zone. And that includes onshore and offshore. And that's everything from technological advancements, physical, we mentioned financial, and then also then that would be supportable by the state California Coastal Commission. So that's it for, for the readout.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. That was a great summary. I really don't have anything to add to that. I thought, I thought it was great. It's a, it's, it's a very interesting subject and it's going to be ongoing, ongoing planning for many, many decades to come to deal with it. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the ABR meeting this past Monday, there was a new pre-application review of a new project on 825 De Lavina Street. There had been a project proposed a number of years ago, which was withdrawn, but this is a new one at 825. It's a priority overlay project. It does not exceed the 15,000 square foot rule for the site, so we won't be seeing it. It's 14,625 feet. I don't know who, who had the tape measure, but, not accusing anyone, but 14,625. Perhaps when it goes through the process, we may have some change in that, that it may have to comply with. In any event, I thought it was a good example of our transitioning perhaps to looking at FAR percentages versus, you know, absolute unit density or dwelling units per acre, which is very confusing to the public because it's always mentioned on a per acre basis. So when somebody hears 63 units per acre, it's not really indicative of maybe a 10,000-square-foot lot or a 5,000-square-foot lot. So I think the, getting to FAR is clearer and less scary to the public. What was interesting is that the information to do an FAR is already contained, not only on the top sheet of the plans that are submitted, the information is available, but also even in the paragraph that goes with each update and what's the project description within the ABR. And I didn't look at HLC, but I think it might be the same. The information that's provided is the number of units and how large they are on average. So if you multiply those, you come up with a number. If you, also the parcel size is in there. So if you divide it by the parcel size, you will see, let's say, what might be called net residential square foot, a livable square foot, which is the same way that the AUD is made up. It's livable. Then also, there's a calculation for, call it net construction FAR, which includes all the other construction activities, I think, except for air. So it'd be enclosed. That also is reported directly on the, on the front sheet of the concept set and included in the narrative. So if you took the, that, in this case was 30,000 square feet of full construction versus about 14, 14, I'm sorry, versus a smaller number for the residential. But if you take the full building, divided again by the area, that information is there. And in this case, the residential portion represented 107% of the site if you laid it end to end. But with the garage and other items, that came out to 207%. So, and I think in looking at some of the other priority projects, it's pretty similar, where the floor area that's actually livable is coming out on either side of 100%, so one floor. It may look like two floors because of open space and circulation, but then the garage and others just about double what that is. So what I sent in to staff and copied Ms. Skranger as well to ABR is perhaps maybe we can start adding that into the description so people can see what that might mean. And I spoke to this before the ABR board, and, you know, they were, they looked interested in being able to hear what a FAR may be. And right away, of course, on the residential portion, you could see whether it complies with AUD right off the bat. So just wanted to comment on that. The other point is, I think, one of the concerns, I think Commissioner Schwartz and I had when we went, came, came through with our table on a FAR, was to make sure maybe we distinguish between the livable portion, which is subject to objective design guidelines and no net loss, et cetera, in addition to looking at the entire building, which is not subject to no net loss. And it's really more flexibility is provided to the design boards in their review. So having that, those two FARs, one for the actual residences versus density FAR, and then for the entire building, reporting on both, I think would give us a good picture both for the public to see what the massing is, as well as for everybody to determine that the building is complying with providing housing and not being cut back on that portion of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Those are excellent points, and it probably would be a good comparison. As I recall, we had one project come to us for comments that was 14,999 square feet. I don't remember where it was, but I just remember that and going, oh, really? Who brought out that measuring tape? So.
That's the one with the little jog in it, in the corner, right?
Yeah, the one, the one square foot jog. Yeah. Commissioner Lodge, you had something else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I meant to include in my report on the Arroyo Borough Phase Two, the project will include an 80, new 86-foot-long pedestrian bridge to provide a connection between the trails in, on the west side of the creek and what will soon be the new Las Pecitas bike, bike way, pathway to the, the multi-use path along Las Pecitas.
Doesn't that require a vote? By ballot measure across the creek?
No, because it's, it's public. That was for private use.
Strike that from the record.
Yeah. That's why, that's why it recovered, required a vote. It's public land that was being, being used privately.
Very good, Madam Chair. You're on your toes, as always.
Oh, well, with that comment, yes. It's time to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
I have a comment, though.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
It's come to my attention that this may very well be your last meeting as chair, unless there's a third term.
Well, I'll be here, I'll be here in January to start off the meeting, but, but, yeah.
I'll save it for then, then.
Okay, okay, good. I can hardly wait. Okay. With that, thank you all very much, and the meeting is adjourned.